Pursuant to Section 8414 in Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, October 21st, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummins Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 8414-12 in Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance by Central High Schools JR ROTC.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Dr. Holman will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
Our vision: Every student, every day, prepared for success. And our mission: Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Crackey. Ryan.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Gadding.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Holman.
Present.
Cassidy.
Here.
Snipe.
Present.
Pearlman.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Moving on to School Spotlight with Jeremy Maskel.
Good evening, President Snow, members of the Board of Education, and Superintendent Dr. Logan. We are very happy to present JR ROTC leaders from across Omaha Public Schools as this evening's OPS Proud Spotlight. From earning some of the top recognition offered to cadets at national competition and international representation at D-Day commemorations, I'd like to welcome Colonel Michael DeBolt, Director of Army Instruction, to continue the celebration this evening.
Thank you again for the opportunity to recognize, I like to say, our average student, but these are truly are exceptional and gifted students here with us this evening. We're going to begin with a Legion of Valor, so at this time I invite students Marie Burks and her family, and Lordomai Camacho with her family, to please come forward. Student Marie Burks Benson High School and Lordomai Camacho Bryan High School has been awarded the Legion of Valor, a Bronze Cross for achievement in junior ROTC. The Legion of Valor is awarded to those students who demonstrate scholastic excellence in military and academic subjects. Only one cadet out of 4,000 received this award, or approximately 27 cadets nationwide. These two young ladies are the 86th and 87th OPS recipient since the National Award began in 1961. Joining Cadet Burks are her parents, Jed and Kaylee Burks, and joining Cadet Camacho is her mother, Celsa Ruiz. Cadets, attention to orders. Legion of Valor of the United States of America, to all who shall see these presents greetings, this is to certify that Cadet Lordomai Camacho and Cadet Marie Burks has been awarded the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross for outstanding achievement in the Reserve Officer Training Corps. Signed, Lieutenant Colonel Richard Wanke. Presenting the award this evening is Superintendent Dr. Cheryl Logan and School Board President and Minister Marcus Snow. And with them here today, we have their instructors, who'll be bringing the awards forward. As they're presenting the awards, Cadet Burks, she interviewed today with Creighton University, ROTC, and she's looking to do a four-year scholarship at the University of Nebraska at Lincoln. And then with Mrs. Camacho, she has enlisted in the Army already, and she is hoping to go and finish her training, then come back and train as an engineer at the university. Cadets, please be seated. At this time, I would like to recognize Omaha South Leadership Team. Well, South junior ROTC recently competed in the Leadership Bowl Championship in Washington, DC, June 21st through June 25th. Over 2,000 high school programs, which included military installations and department defense schools, worldwide compete online throughout the year to qualify to send the championship at Catholic University in Washington, DC. The team, and I'll have you step forward. Soraud Poodle, Anne Rincon, Alejandro Gomez Juarez, and Eric Garcia. They finished 23rd out of 40 teams who competed in the Live Leadership Bowl. The team was coached by Lieutenant Colonel David Smith and Sergeant First Class Thomas Sorensen. And I believe at this time, the superintendent has a... And if he has what doing about face, and then she has a coin for you. And ma'am, I'll let you tell everybody about the coin.
During the last school year, we had some coins made. I think it's so important that each individual identify their leadership values and their moral compass. And last year, we had some coins made, and I want to, I've had them since last year, and I was waiting for the right time to give them out to the first students, and so tonight, you all will be the first to receive this coin that identifies my leadership values, and I hope that it will encourage you to identify your own. And these reflect our mission and vision of the Omaha Public Schools, so I hope that you enjoy them. I know that the military likes coins, and so we had coins made. So, enjoy, thank you.
And as she presents those coins...
Don't forget to shake everybody's hand, so you got to have a bow face.
Yeah. Be still.
I'm ready for this coin.
Please go ahead and get pens. Congratulations. You're very welcome, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, you're welcome. Congratulations, my teammate. Congratulations. So, the crowd's ringing on the bus from France.
And our final item on the agenda is the 75th anniversary of D-Day. The memory lives on, June 6th, 2019 marked the 75th anniversary of the D-Day landings in the Battle of Normandy, and with it, a momentous occasion to celebrate peace, liberty, and reconciliation. Laurent Lilia, the Mayor of St. Lawrence, Normaux, located on Omaha Beach, is presenting a French flag to the Omaha Public Schools junior ROTC cadets that participate in this year's events. 69 people from 10 schools and three school districts represented the heartland of America this past June in France, including our superintendent. So, if you would please come forward. We're presenting the flags in alphabetical order with our schools, and presenting the flags as certificate to each battalion commander and instructor is Merrill Rambo. Mr. Rambo is an Omaha alum, class of 69, and our first OPS junior ROTC Brigade Commander and fourth Legion of Valor recipient. The citation on the certificate. This is certified that the company flag was flown over Omaha Beach, Normandy, France for the 75th anniversary of D-Day. The flag is being presented to Brian. Central. The cadets from Northwest unable to make it. We have Northwest High School and South High School. Each of these flags are a gift from the municipality of St. Lawrence, Normaux, and its Mayor, Phil Lilia. And again, we have an opportunity to go ahead and present each one of you a pen as well, so hopefully you wear that proudly as a club pen. And on behalf of the Omaha junior ROTC program, we appreciate the support of the Omaha community, the school's foundation, and our scoreboard for this trip. Please take your seats.
So, I will open that up for questions real quick with the members of the board. Do you guys have any questions or comments for our young men and women in JR ROTC that are here with us today? Do we have another spotlight? We don't have another spotlight? Okay, so I was told not to have, bring up any questions to each individual student, but I do want to do something interesting because we have all these young women and men here with us today. Can we just take one group photo with all you guys up here with the Board of Education? Let's do it. The whole board.
No. I need some height.
Lots of pictures.
Yeah, that should be fine. Yeah. Okay, keep looking. Just taking a test one. Okay, Mark, can you scoot in? Mr. Snow, can you scoot in just a little bit? Okay, one more. Everybody look this way, big smiles. One, two, three. There we go. Thank you.
We do have a question from one of our board members, Colonel DeBolt. Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Gadding.
So, my question is, and I remember being very impressed with our ROTC students in the past, the Legion of Valor is given to how many students a year? And do you know how many we've had receive that in Omaha Public Schools?
They were the 86th and 87th.
86th and 87th, wow.
Yeah, and what they hand out is one to every 4,000, so nationwide it's 27. So, for OPS to have one, and then this year to have two, it speaks very highly, you know, the credit to our parents and to our instructors.
So, 27 students received this honor?
Yes, ma'am.
This year, and we had two.
Yes, ma'am.
That is so impressive, and we've had, and they were number 86th and 87th this year. That is so impressive, and I just want people to know that, because that is a really impressive number. Thank you all for your leadership with our JR ROTC students at all the schools.
It's an honor. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Waiting for our Vice President to get back. She was handing out the OPS Proud Pens to our amazing students. Alrighty, moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Snow and members of the board and those in attendance and watching at home. I want to begin my remarks by acknowledging that October is National Principals Month. Every year in October, the American Federation of School Administrators, the National Association of Elementary School Principals, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals join forces to celebrate our nation's principles for their tireless dedication to their students and the schools they serve. We know great schools are led by great leaders, and here at the Omaha Public Schools, we are proud to have some of the finest school leaders around. We publicly thank our school principals for their selfless dedication to our students and our families, the long hours, and we sincerely appreciate their contributions to educating the next generation of leaders. Hispanic Heritage Month State Commemoration, each year from September 15th to October 15th, the United States of America recognizes National Hispanic American Heritage Month to pay tribute to the generations of Hispanic Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our nation's society. Here in Nebraska, the 13th Annual Hispanic Heritage Month State Commemoration will take place October 11th in Lincoln, where we will honor our very own Anna Torres Rodriguez, a bilingual liaison from Central High School. She will receive an Inspiration Award for her work with students and families at Central High School and throughout Omaha Public Schools. Thank you, Anna, for making us OPS proud. Last Saturday, the Collective for Youth held their Lights Out After School. On Saturday morning, I was able to attend the Collective for Youth 2019 Lights On After School Celebration at UNO. Organizers displayed more than 30 activity tables for students and families. The event also include performances for students who participate in after-school programming provided for collective youth around our school district. Collective for Youth celebrates and supports 34 school-based out-of-school-time sites that serve more than 7,400 Omaha students each day. These include Civic Nebraskas, three outside-of-school community learning centers at Lewis and Clark Middle, Sherman Elementary School, and Lothrup Magnet Elementary. Thanks to Collective for Youth, they are a tremendous partner for honoring our students and families with this wonderful event this past Saturday and in past years, and for your support of our school students year-round. On Friday, the Chamber of Commerce had its first conference on Opportunity, Diversity, and Equity. I was able to attend along with four other members of our senior team. It was an excellent conference. We really enjoyed ourselves, as well as learned a lot about what we can do to not just celebrate diversity, but to ensure that we are being inclusive. The conference talked about many things, especially around creating environments where all contributions matter, particularly with regard to diversity of thought, perspective, and experiences, which I will tell you, I found the most helpful. The Chamber's strategy identifies a focus on inclusive hiring and promotion practices and bolsters efforts to develop, retain, and attract the nation's top talent to the city of Omaha. Coming up for our parents, parent-teacher conferences are coming up. Parents, please remember to sign up and to attend parent-teacher conferences at your child's school this month. Parent engagement and involvement in students' education plays a key role in academic success. We will begin conferences with our high school students on October 10th. Middle school conferences start on October 17th, and elementary schools will begin October 24th. Parents, you can monitor your child's current progress in school through our parent portal. The portal details student grade information, teacher information, and much more. We also continue to post tips for parents on our social media sites to help make the most of discussions before, during, and after parent-teacher conferences. We look forward to visiting with our parents next week and through the end of the month of October. On October 22nd, we have our second pre-ACT Day. There is no school that day for freshmen, juniors, and seniors, and we will hold a pre-ACT Day across all of our high schools. This year, we have worked very thoughtfully with our high school leaders. Thank you to Susan Christopherson for leading this effort to ensure that students not just take the pre-ACT, but they use the results that they receive in English, math, reading, and science to reflect on their learning and to bolster areas where they need to take ownership of their own learning and make sure that they are prepared to do well on the ACT when they take it in the 11th grade. I really want to thank her for her efforts and the efforts that she's making with our high school leaders who are leading that effort in their individual high school. Our next, my next part of the board report is part of our strategy to ensure that students can attend 95% of days, which means that they miss less than nine days, which really is a lot of school. It's almost two weeks for a whole school year. And that is an effort we call 10,000 Villagers. We are one big village. We are going to collect 10,000 hats, 10,000 gloves, and 10,000 scarves for our young people this winter. As I understand it, we may need them as early as Friday, although, I know, boo, but we are going to distribute those. I believe it's on November 9th, we will have a distribution day here at TAC. Thank you to Lisa Utterback and her team, and to Jeremy Maskel, who are working on a joint effort to make sure we get the word out. For $20, $20 buys four hats, four gloves, and four scarves. So, you can make your donations through the Omaha Public Schools Foundation website, and we are looking forward to making sure all of our young people have the winter gear that we need, because we're going to be going to school as much as possible when, during the cold. Our Strategic Plan of Action progress update tomorrow is our second Futures Lab session to take place on October 8th for Strategic Plan of Action development. Today, this afternoon, I met with our high school leaders where we had the opportunity to view our high school data room, which is upstairs on the fourth floor, which looks at every kind of data you can imagine in terms of our programming, to include programming cost, graduation rates, ninth grade retention rates, participation rates in advanced courses, the program, the current program, programmatic offerings of our schools, and we look forward to doing that activity as well with our elementary leaders very soon. I believe it's, I don't know if it's next week, and then our middle school leaders as well, and then as, obviously with our Board of Education as well, but we're very excited about that. Since we last came together, Columbian Elementary School was awarded a Blue Ribbon of Excellence. Can we have a round of applause for Columbian? Yay! The highly coveted recognition distinguishes Columbian as one of the finest schools in the nation for exhibiting exemplary high performance. Columbia is one of only six schools in the state of Nebraska to receive a Blue Ribbon recognition in 2019. We salute Principal Craig McGee and former Principal Nanette Beller, as well as the fine staff and students at Columbian for shining the spotlight onto the amazing work happening in the Omaha Public Schools. All of you make us OPS proud. Columbian will receive their award in Washington, DC on November 14th and 15th at a national celebration. We're very excited about that. Lastly, we have some kudos to student Maria Burks Benson High School and Lordomai Camacho. They received their Legion Awards, and those were given out. We also extend congratulations and kudos to Blackburn Art Teacher Hillary George. She was named Secondary Art Teacher of the Year by the Nebraska Art Teachers Association. Her principal is here, Jody Pesik, and smiling. I believe that Hillary did the Rad Women exhibit that was really a very cool thing for her to do. She's very committed. I have had an opportunity to meet her, and she is super committed, super talented artist in her own right, and certainly brings that love of art to her students each day. So, these conclude my remarks. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Board members, Ms. Snipe.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. I just want to take a moment to, a few years ago, when I was doing leadership development, I met a young man. Everybody knows I'm a very much so a Bryan advocate. I met a young man when I was doing leadership development, and he stood out to me because he was a middle school, and he was bragging to Ms. Kim about how when he went to high school, he was going to go to Bryan High School. And not only was he going to go to Bryan High School, he was going to be a star football player at Bryan High School. And I was like, okay, okay, so now this young man goes to Bryan High School, and he is doing very well at football. And so, his name is Jalen Walker, and so I told him that I would try to help him if I could. Jalen has been selected to play in the East-West game, which is a shrine game in Tampa, Florida. And so, Jalen and also the new principal at Bryan, Dr. Ortega, him and I have worked, both worked with Jalen when Jalen was much younger. And so, anyway, this Friday, before they play Lincoln East, they're going to have a spaghetti dinner fundraiser for Jalen to try to help his family get him to this game. It's Friday, October 11th. It's going to be at the Bryan High School cafeteria. It is from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM, and it is $7 for adults and $5 for kids. I wanted to show you something that I witnessed. A few weeks ago, I was at a Bryan game, and it was a very important game, and Jalen was not allowed to play in the game because Bryan also has a new football coach, and Jalen needed to learn that he may be the star, but when coach says to do something, that's what you do. And so, Jalen was not allowed to play, and as I was watching him, though, he was out there, and he was being as supportive as he could be to the rest of his teammates, even though we were basically getting smashed. And so, I was very proud of him. So, as we've talked about leadership tonight, I think that he exemplifies that, and that goes to show what happens when parents are involved, but not just parents, I'm pretty sure teachers as well, coaches, and all of that. So, I am very, as we say, OPS proud of Jalen and willing to do whatever I can to get him that support. So, this fundraiser is this Friday at Bryan in the cafeteria from 5:00. And so Jalen and also the new principal at Bryan, Dr. Ortega, him and I have worked, both worked with Jalen when Jalen was much younger. And so anyway, this Friday, before they play Lincoln East, they're going to have a spaghetti dinner fundraiser for Jalen to try to help his family get him to this game. It's Friday, October eleventh. It's going to be at the Bryan High School cafeteria. It is from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., and it is seven dollars for adults and five dollars for kids. I wanted to show you something that I witnessed. A few weeks ago, I was at a Bryan game, and it was a very important game. And Jalen was not allowed to play in the game because Bryan also has a new football coach. And Jalen needed to learn that he may be the star, but when coach says to do something, that's what you do. And so Jalen was not allowed to play, and as I was watching him, though, he was out there, and he was being as supportive as he could be to the rest of his teammates, even though we were basically getting smashed. And so I was very proud of him. So as we've talked about leadership tonight, I think that he exemplifies that, and that goes to show what happens when parents are involved, but not just parents, I'm pretty sure teachers as well, coaches and all of that. So I am very, as we say, OPS proud of Jalen and willing to do whatever I can to get him that support. So this fundraiser is this Friday at Bryan in the cafeteria from 5:00 to 6:30. It is a spaghetti fundraiser, and if you are able to support him, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Crackey.
One of the things I've been doing in my spare time is visiting schools, and I've made a number of visits to the schools. Columbian was one of them, the Blue Ribbon School. And if you haven't seen it, it's very unique in the building process of what was done to it. So I've been to these many elementary, middle schools, high schools. And I would like to encourage the public to visit our schools with the remodeling going on and seeing what has happened, as well as the new construction in some of the schools. And I don't know, you know, if you don't know unless you go. And so I don't like to have taxpayers say things in a negative fashion if they haven't been out there and seen what it is that they are complaining about. And anyone who wants to go visit with me, please call me, and I will go out with you and we'll do a tour. I wanted to note that a couple of things I noticed while I was out there is we have cut ourselves to the bone, and I don't think we can continue this kind of cutting. We have cut so that we have one para in a school, maybe two, and we can say, well, that was the building decision. Well, how far are they going to be making these decisions? Because there's only so many cuts you can make, only so many decisions that you can make. And we can say their budget allowed them to do it. Their budget doesn't fully allow them to do these kind of things. So while we did that this year, I don't know that we can continue on that path to keep cutting our budget as we have done. But when severe cuts are made, their choices are limited, please know that. And from even the poor equipment that we're not able to give them, like a couple of the schools where I was, and I noticed the lawn, and I started talking, you know, the principals were great, they took me around, and I was wondering about that lawn or that lawn. They have ordered like a new mower, but they haven't gotten it, and some of it is not in their budget. So they're scraping along with that, and that is what I want to say. I am maybe different than everybody else, but this is what I saw, and this is how I feel, and I have to say that, and I'm hopeful that the public will come along. And whenever I'm able to talk to the taxpayers, I will get them information and inform them in a way that, and tell them what I have seen, and they can always go with me. So I want to thank you, and that is my remark for tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Holman.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to just give a warm thank you to the following principals, Mr. Williams at Prairie Wind, Mr. B. at Fullerton, Mr. Lee at Omaha Northwest High School, Ms. Vilecek at Ponca, and Ms. Burkhardt at Hartman. Not only have they always welcomed me into the buildings to visit with them, to speak with them, discuss things with them, but just this last week, they allowed me to bring along a doctoral student who is shadowing me to visit our buildings in OPS. She's from Lincoln, and she's been very interested in Omaha Public Schools and what we do in our buildings and what our buildings are like and how they differ from the buildings that she's used to in her school district. And so I just want to give them a warm thank you. I really appreciate you allowing me to bring her along with for my building visits. Thank you.
Any other board members?
Just a reminder, tomorrow is the District Citizens Advisory Committee. I believe it's the first meeting of the school year. It will be here in the TAC, in the boardroom at 6:30 tomorrow. Also, if you guys are available, October sixteenth, we have the dedication for the Bryan Middle School Boys and Girls Club. That will happen at 5:30 October sixteenth. It's a beautiful addition to the school and to that community over there, and I'm sure as soon as it, I think it's already open, it's going to be filled with students, so. Also, thank you to the taxpayers for supporting the bonds and the programs that we've been doing in our community. So moving on to our next item, which I do believe is public comment. The board has adopted policy eighty-three forty-six, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and we'll be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you do not mention the student or staff member by name, and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us, and he'll look into those types of details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray, and he will make sure each board member gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. And by the way, Mr. Ray, please raise your hand, so everybody knows. We always say Mr. Ray, but some people might not know who he is. There you go. A little human today, it's always good. It's good for the soul. Our first speaker is Jennifer Simpson.
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Superintendent Dr. Logan, and members of the board. My name is Jennifer Simpson, J.E.N.N.I.F.E.R.S.I.M.P.S.O.N., and I live at twenty-two thirty-two North One Hundred and Sixty-third Street. Yes, I was here not that long ago, expressing my concerns about the new proposed student assignment plan. I know that this plan will most likely get approved tonight. If this was just about my family, then I probably wouldn't be here. But it is much bigger than that. It is also about the future of Picot, a school that I happen to love. And I felt that I needed to try one more time to express how this will affect our community. To the district, when factoring in the Picot attendance area students, our kids are just numbers. I get that, but this is personal for us. These are our kids. My husband and I chose the OPS neighborhood where our kids would go to high school with our elementary and middle school peers. That was the plan, anyway. But I feel like I've been worrying for years now about how this new high school will play out. My main concern first was timing, as my oldest is now an eighth grader. Too late for the bond and the new high school really to have an impact on his high school years. Never in my mind, though, did I think that I would make my now-fifth-grade daughter's life harder, that the district would decide to send the Picot kids to a different school than all of their middle school friends. By Picot working hard to get the bond approved, we actually have made things worse for our kids. That's hard to swallow. I cannot shake the image in my mind of my daughter starting high school as a freshman, looking around for a familiar face, finding no one, and having to sit alone in the school cafeteria at lunch. This will be her reality, since her Picot class was small to start. She'll know about fifty kids in a school around two thousand plus. The odds of her seeing her elementary friends, let alone having lunch with them, are not very good. She can go to her home school, where she won't know many people, or she can choose another high school where she'll know even less. Those aren't great options. Peer relationships matter. They do. A ten-year-old Millard student took her own life a couple weeks ago. My daughter is ten. This hurts even thinking about that family's suffering. I don't believe that having friends and fitting in is isolated to certain demographics. I think it affects all of our kids. And I'm not willing to gamble my kids' lives. Neither are the other Picot families. There are plenty of things out of my control, but what my child's home high school is, I can. With the proposed student assignment plan, my family will have no choice but to move. Neither the home school nor opting into another OPS school allows my daughter's middle school friendships to remain intact, and we cannot do that to our daughter. She is not the extrovert that my son is. She is trying to make new friends in middle school, but it doesn't come easy for her. Mrs. Cassidy mentioned at a previous meeting that families may need to move out of the district, as difficult choices had to be made, and not everybody would be happy with the new student assignment plan. While I appreciate the understanding in that you're giving us ample notice, it is still very disheartening to hear a member of our school board openly invite OPS families to leave the district, especially when we are already losing so many kids who should be OPS kids due to opting into other districts. We should be trying to keep those kids. But now we are telling the families who did not opt out, who want to be a part of OPS and make this a strong district for all of our kids, no, you go ahead and go too.
One minute.
To understand the impact to Picot this proposed plan, we did a survey that was answered by fifty-five families. Of those families, ninety percent surveyed are considering moving so their kids can attend high school with their middle school friends, or opting into another district to attend a nearby high school without having to move. You know, that's going to wipe out pretty much our entire existing act of PTA. This will hurt. The PTA does attend for our school and teachers. Some families may stay at Picot but will not continue on to Buffett, knowing to move is necessary to have their kids settled before middle school. Before you vote tonight, I just ask you to at least consider how much energy it requires us as adults to reach out, make idle chit-chat, and the relief that we feel when we see a familiar face. Now imagine being a child at the age when you're most insecure and unsure about everything and not having that. Please also consider you make the change impacting a relatively small group of students, the impact it will have on the young people who are affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mamie Jackson.
Good evening, and I've never done this before, so I was listening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, Dr. Logan, and members of the board. I'm speaking on behalf of some of the parents from Picot, asked me to come. I do not have a horse in this race. I'm a Millard School parent, and my kids actually go to private school, religious school, which is our parent, our choice as a family. What they asked me to speak about is, I am a Realtor, they asked me how it would affect their home values. To be perfectly honest, the, it's interesting, I'm from South Florida, I'm from Miami, and OPS schools, no matter what OPS school it is, kicks South Florida's butt as far as schools. You guys are all amazing. But it's interesting, when you come to Nebraska from other parts of the country, GreatSchools.org is where everybody looks. They look at that, they want to know what rates the schools have, how many stars they have, things like that, and it does affect school property values, home property values. What I thought was interesting, though, not as much how it will affect Picot schools, is how it will affect Prairie Wind schools, just in looking at the numbers. I don't know if you guys follow real estate at all. Obviously, the market's been very good right now. Homes that we sold for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars four years ago are a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars now in that beginning market. And looking at the Prairie Wind neighborhoods and those schools and those prices, from what I understand, bringing free and reduced meals to the new school, new high school, is something that you all are looking at. In the four years when this takes place, those home values are going to be such that a lot of those families will no longer be, if those homes turn over, on the free and reduced lunches. Those home prices will be so high that those, again, those families won't qualify for them anymore. And again, this is my objective opinion, something that I've been studying. Also, the families in the neighborhoods around Burke High School, I've been told that that's another thing, that there's not, it's an aged neighborhood, there's not a lot of children in those neighborhoods that feed into Burke. Well, moving here from South Florida fifteen years ago, and there was no children on my cul-de-sac, and I had a two-year-old daughter at the time, there's eleven children on my cul-de-sac now within fifteen years, within four households, because it was an aged neighborhood, and it's turned over. So probably seven years ago is when we had five children, and those homes are going to age out, and people are going to turn over, I hope, because we sell real estate, both my husband and I, homes are going to turn over, and there's going to be families in those homes. People are going to downsize, people are going to, you know, they want to go from a multi- or split-entry level to a ranch home. So there will be children in those neighborhoods in four years when those homes are going to be, you know, again, turning over, and those kids are going to be going to school. Finally, the, and I apologize, look at my notes here, the rental market, that's another thing. The homes in those neighborhoods, and being an investor of properties myself in Omaha, we just had two tenants leave, and property values, again, and they're kind of, they're not in Prairie Wind, but they're off of Maple and Ninety-first, in that general vicinity, and I work with a lot of investors who are buying there. We're raising our rents. We went from twelve hundred to thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred dollars a month in those neighborhoods because we can. The rate, rental rate is good, and we're raising our rates, and you have families that can no longer afford that and unfortunately are moving further east then. Again, bringing those families that are in those neighborhoods, are they still going to be the free and reduced lunch families? I just don't know if they will be. Again, I've just come to you with those figures. Again, I know this is the last meeting, and I wasn't here when you guys were having discussions, and I could have brought you more, and if you guys had questions, I could answer them. But again, I don't have a horse in this race, it was just information I wanted to bring to your attention. Again, I think OPS, I follow Dr. Logan on your Twitter feed, I think you do an amazing job. It's even though we go to private schools, all of the public schools in Omaha, I think, are amazing, and that is one of the things I tell to any families coming into town here. When they say, well, I look on GreatSchools.org, and I want to go to Elkhorn, and I want to go to Westside, or I want to go to Papillion, I tell them, if they're coming from Chicago or New York or South Florida, I'm like, you are going to be great in any of these schools. It's OPS, whether it's Millard, no matter where it is, all of these schools probably blow them away from where they're coming. So thank you, congratulations for the good work you do, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Also, Jennifer, thank you for your comments today, I appreciate them. Moving on to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is here before us.
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Ryan, second by Mrs. Crackey. Any abstentions? See and none, roll call, please. Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pullman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item J. one A, recommended boundary changes. And I believe presenting is Mr. Hughes and Dr. McFarland.
Good evening. Dr. Logan, President Snow, Vice President Holman, members of the board. We come to you this evening to review the boundary recommendation options presented previously to the Board of Education at the August twenty-sixth meeting as an information item. At that meeting, there was discussion regarding the potential future impacts related to our recommendation. We've considered the discussion, we've reexamined the data, and reevaluated the potential impacts. We continue to support the option that you have before you as our district recommendation. Mr. Hughes will go ahead and review the option.
Thanks, Annie. As Annie mentioned, the elementary-middle school boundaries that we bring before you this evening are the same as we've presented in the information item previously. These recommendations get the kindergarten through fifth grade live-in utilization ranges at the elementary schools in the area of South Omaha to forty-six point one percent to ninety-six point nine percent. There's one elementary school in this area that splits between middle schools, and that's Ashen Park Robbins, splitting between Forty-second and Y Middle School and Norris. And middle school live-in utilization ranges from a low of eighty-seven point five percent to a high of about ninety-seven point one percent. If we go through the individual changes in the Exhibit A that you have, maps one through seven actually have a closer examination of these boundary changes, if you've already looked at them or if you want to look at them in the future, maps that have a little bit more detail if you're concerned about streets. But I'll briefly describe the individual boundaries and the changes that will be taking place or be recommended. If we look at the map on the left, the green lines are the current elementary school boundaries, and the shaded areas in different colors are the recommended boundaries. Starting from the north, Tenth and Pine in red will take an area from Castalar and Bancroft to form its new attendance boundary. Bancroft, you can't really see the difference in color here, but will take a small portion of Spring Lake in green from its northern side, and then Gomez will take a small portion of Spring Lake from the southern side. The Fort Crook boundary, Fort Crook and Giles, or Childs, excuse me, Childs Road Elementary School will take most of its attendance boundary from the Gomez attendance boundary and a small portion from Chandler View. And the final elementary school change will be a small portion of the Gateway Elementary School being put into the Gilder Elementary School. At the middle school level on the right, the black and orange dashed boundaries are the current middle school boundaries, and again, the color or shaded And again, the color or shaded portions of the map are the new or recommended attendance boundaries. So the gray area of 10th and, or excuse me, of 42nd and Y is mostly taking area from Bryan, kind of the northern portion of the Bryan attendance area, and then a small portion of the Norris attendance area. Additionally, Mars will take a small portion of the Norris attendance area, really just the remaining part of the Bancroft attendance area, and a small part of the Bryan attendance area in the south, the rest of the Fort Crook attendance area, to have full alignment for those elementary schools for all of Mars Middle School, excuse me. When we look at this overall recommendation, we see at the elementary level, all but three schools have a live-in utilization of under 90%. And three schools are above that 90% threshold, but definitely below 100%. So at Ashen Park Robbins, there's no boundary change, but they would lose 6th grade in this scenario and become a K5 elementary school as opposed to a K5. So that would reduce their population. Bancroft would also see a removal of the 6th grade population and would see a boundary change. Castalar would see a boundary change, but the grade level configuration would remain a K5 going forward. Chandler View would also see a 6th grade move as well as a boundary change. Gateway would see a 6th grade move as well as a boundary change. And Gilder would see a 6th grade move as well as a boundary change. Gomez would add 5th grade in this scenario, or in this recommendation, and would also see a boundary change. Highland and Indian Hill would not have boundary changes, but would see a move of 6th grade. Obviously, the two new elementary schools would have brand-new boundaries and would both be kindergarten through 5th grade, or PK through 5th grade, potentially, elementary schools. And then finally, Pawnee would have no boundary change, but would also see a 6th grade move. And then Spring Lake would see, again, an addition of 5th grade, just like Gomez, and a boundary change. If we look at the overall utilization of these schools in this area, we're at about 84% today. Projections for this area look to have, for the grades K through 5, another 100-plus students. Unfortunately, predicting K5 population out five and six years is a little bit difficult, because some of those students haven't been born at this point. So a lot of the data that we have to project elementary schools is based on what we know is being born today and the number of kids we see coming to kindergarten today. So those projections are a little bit difficult to peg and harder to do, because we don't have really good information about the student population that we have. At the middle school level, we see that we have the four middle schools all under 100% utilization, two of them under 90%, Bryan and the new middle school at 42nd and Y, and Mars and Norris both at about 97% live-in utilization. So at this, with this recommendation, Bryan would add 6th grade. So all of those, or many of those elementary schools, that would see a movement of 6th grade, a lot of those students would be going to Bryan. And they would also see a boundary change to help accommodate that addition of 6th grade. Mars would see the removal of 5th grade and would also see a boundary change. And then Norris would see some additional 6th graders, really just from the 10th and Pine as a feeder to Norris, as well as the small portion of Ashen Park Robbins that remains split between 42nd and Y and Norris. Those students would go to Norris for 6th grade. So they would see their overall 7, 8 population drop, but their 6th grade population would increase a little bit. And then finally, the new middle school, obviously open as a 6, 8, and would just be a brand-new boundary, mostly coming from the Bryan and partially the Norris attendance area. At the high school level, again, as Annie mentioned, the recommendation that we bring before you tonight is the same recommendation that we spoke about at the last board meeting. We did review the concerns expressed. And I tell you that, you know, we spend more time talking about the high school boundaries, and specifically this boundary, than any of the lines that we had to draw, so to speak, in this. So I want to, you know, I want, we have a large team of people back here that met every Wednesday morning for, it seems like, a very long time. And we labored over, you know, a lot of the decisions that we had to make here, understanding that these affect families. There are people that will be affected in the middle of their time at a school. So I just want to, I want to express that we did spend a lot of time looking at the decisions that we made and what recommendation we brought forward to you. In this recommendation, the high school utilization ranges from about 67% to 87.1%. Now, again, that's the live-in utilization, the students that live in those attendance areas and would potentially attend one of our OPS regular high schools, you know, not a program or some other, not one of our seven high schools. We did eliminate both of the shared areas in this recommendation. We do still have six elementary schools that are split at the high school level. And then we continue to have eight elementary schools split at the high school level. And that's about the same number of splits we have today in terms of feeder patterns from middle school to high school. So maps 8 through 10 in the Exhibit A also are a little bit more detail of the boundary changes being proposed. So if you want something that's zoomed in a little bit more, those are available. If I go through the individual boundary changes, if we start in the south, we did get the shared area of Bryan and South, split between Bryan and South, so that area is no longer a shared area. The 40, excuse me, 60th and Elsite takes the majority of its attendance boundary from South High School and takes a small portion from Bryan High School, kind of just the northern portion of Bryan. Central gives a small part of its boundary to Benson, basically aligning the Kennedy and Walnut Hill attendance areas, all to Benson. Currently, those are split between Central and Benson. And then the Lowthrup attendance area from Central to North. Benson also gives a portion of its attendance area to Northwest in the form of the Mountain View attendance area and a half of the Wakanda area. And then North High School gives the other half of the Wakanda area to Northwest High School. And then finally, 156th and Ida, the recommendation would be to have the attendance boundary formed from mostly Northwest attendance area and a portion of the Burke Northwest shared area. So the Standing, or excuse me, the Prairie Wind and Saddle Brook attendance areas from Northwest and the Fullerton and Picott, or excuse me, Fullerton and Standing Bear areas from the Burke Northwest shared area. And the remainder of the Burke Northwest shared area would then be put into Burke High School. So when we look at the utilization of these, of all the high schools going forward, we see that in 2018, 19, we had about 1,300, or excuse me, 13,400 students enrolled in our seven high schools that lived in our district. And about another 350 students who attended from outside of our district, right? So they're coming in from another school district. So the total last year is about 13,800 students. Overall utilization at, once the new high schools are built, is going to be about 77.2%. And those high schools are going to range, again, from about 67% to 87%. Looking forward, 2024, 25 projections put the overall population at about 82% of capacity. So if we're sitting at about 77% today, we do expect growth in our high school population, getting into about 82%. If we add in those students that are likely going to still come to us from outside of the district, so Nebraska Option or Learning Community students, we'll probably add another 350 students. And again, push our utilization at the high school level probably up to about 83 or 84%. Now, one of the things we know is this is live-in population. These are the students that are living in the areas that we're talking about. At our high school level, we have about 45% of our students who don't attend their neighborhood school. So we know that the student assignment plan is going to impact where students enroll. It's not just where they live. Additionally, we know that populations are going to shift. Housing trends can change. Migration can change. A lot of things, a lot of shifts can happen in the school district, outside of the school district's hands, that are going to impact populations. So moving forward, as we develop a student's assignment plan over the next year to function at the high school level with two new high schools, we're going to go beyond and continue to monitor what the high school populations look like, how the student assignment plan is functioning, and what our populations look like at the high school level to make sure that we're continuing to utilize all of our high schools in the best way possible, that our district is being efficient with all of the schools that we have, and that we're continuing to provide options, choices, and quality schools across the district. So this isn't a, this isn't a plan where you pass the boundaries, you develop a student assignment plan, and then you're done with it. It's something that you continue to monitor going forward. I've been in the district for 13-plus years, and there hasn't been a year that we haven't looked at the student assignment plan, made a tweak, you know, instituted a cap to help a school with population, or looked at a boundary change. So this is a process that will continue going forward. It doesn't kind of stop today, or it doesn't stop once we build a student assignment plan. The last thing I wanted to do before I take any questions is to just talk about how we want to try to accommodate communication for this plan going forward. So currently on our boundary website, boundary OPS.org, we do have a school search. We have a school search that currently functions for the current student assignment plan. So if you want to go look up your neighborhood school, where you have transportation options to, you can do that on our SAP site. Either on that student assignment plan site or on the boundary site going forward, we want to take this kind of school search application that talks about the future boundaries and really take it to the next level. So right now, if you were to put in a, an address... I don't think NUMLOCK was on. It will show you your current neighborhood school and the proposed neighborhood school going forward. There's some radio buttons you can use to select different boundaries to turn on and off. You can select different grade levels. And you can even click on the site, or click on the map, and get information about an area without putting in an address. This is nice for kind of a general understanding of boundaries, but we would like to really try to implement something that allows a family to put in an address, put in a grade, put in a year for that student, and really find, "Does it impact my student?" There are going to be situations going forward where, you know, a student in 5th grade today might think they're going to be impacted in an elementary school or middle school that opens up in the future, but they might not be in a grade that's going to transition. So it's important to know that, "Oh, my family's not impacted." Or, "This student's not impacted, but this student is." And there's a lot of complexities that will be involved in that. But in speaking with Guide K12 and our partners there, I think there's a number of different options we can use to take a tool like this and really have it be a place where families, and even in district staff, anybody can go and really understand what the impact is going forward over the next five years as we build these schools and implement these boundary changes. And that is the presentation, and I will handle questions if anyone has them.
We'll open up for presentations, but first, I have a question. We had a public comment about the free and reduced lunch rate with the high school level. Mr. Hughes, would you be able to address that for us?
So I can't speak to...
To your best of knowledge.
Changes in housing prices necessarily pushing out people in a specific neighborhood. I know Prairie Wind has a number of apartment complexes that are, I'm forgetting the term right now. It's, it's... The city going forward is all about mixed-income housing across the city. So there are incentives for builders to build and have below-market-rate housing.
Like Section 8?
It's not actually, I don't think it's actually Section 8. It's more just below-market rate. And so Prairie Wind has some of those. But I would tell you, that's something that's probably coming to some degree in all newly developing parts of the city, just depending on which developers are buying which pieces of land. You know, those types of houses may change hands, and they may end those programs. But I can't speak to if that might happen. I know that that is happening in this city. And we're trying, you know, the city is making an effort to diffuse poverty rather than putting it in one place, to have it, if it has to be somewhere, if it, it has to be spread across the city. It can't be just in one location, so...
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Just, I wanted to know, and I don't know if you can answer or not, but how will the adjustments affect class size? Or will it at all?
So at the elementary level, I certainly think that class sizes will probably be reduced in the situations where you're building new schools. And we currently have situations where physical space is a barrier to lowering class sizes. So if you don't have enough classrooms, you can't really add another teacher, because there's not space. I know Gateway's in a situation where, yeah, maybe we would like to add a, you know, a section somewhere, but there's not physical space to do it. So, you know, when you do open up that physical space and you have a, you know, utilization that is kind of at that 85% range or below, you give the opportunity to add that staff, whereas in the past, you didn't have a physical space to do it. In terms of elementary, or excuse me, middle school and high school, it's probably a lot more complicated than kind of that elementary look, where it's really just, you know, "How many classrooms do you have?" Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Gotti?
Well, Casey, I want to thank you for the website, because I know you're the architect behind getting a lot of that done. It was impressive when we did the student assignment plan, and I appreciate the work that you're going to do for the boundary changes and the additional student assignment plan.
This will be the most difficult, I think, we've had to do, most complic- complicated.
Yeah, extremely complicated and a lot of work, so I want to thank you for that. Want to also thank you all for the work that you've done. Just really want to speak a little bit to both the new high school and the Burke High School. So when I look at the number for 156th and Ida, and I see proposed live-in of 1,184, I basically can tie that back to 9th through 12th graders that are currently in the area attending OPS schools. And I tie very close to your number. What I've done is I've gone back and looked at 2nd through 5th graders who will be that high school group of students. And when I look at them, with Prairie Wind, I see 1,533 students. That's without construction on any of the several thousand lots that are available in Northwest Omaha. It also doesn't take into full account that huge apartment complex that's going in that we're already seeing some stress put onto Saddle Brook related to that. If Prairie Wind was not in and Picott was in, we'd see right under 1,200 students, or very close to your proposed live-in number. When I look at the number of students attending Burke and Northwest, the number of students attending Burke out of Fullerton, Saddle Brook, Standing Bear, and Prairie Wind is 500 kiddos. And Northwest, Prairie Wind has nearly 200 alone attending Northwest. So my concern is very much related to creating boundaries that put the new high school at capacity within those first three years of operation. And when I went back and I kind of looked at the Burke numbers, what I see there is, I see probably 650 kids, if you take that 2nd through 5th grade group that's currently in all of the schools that would attend Burke. And so my concern is the significant number of students were shifting to the Northwest area and away from the Burke student population. And primarily, it's because of Prairie Wind, because Prairie Wind in 2nd through 5th grade has nearly 600 kids. So that's a lot of kids to shift to Northwest Omaha, away from the Burke area or away from Northwest. So I think back to a historical story, and Mrs. Crackey's probably the only one at this table that would know that story. When my son was a kindergartner at Fullerton, somehow my husband went to the first PTA meeting and got engulfed in all of the moms talking about, "Wow, our school is becoming extremely overcrowded, and we don't know what we're going to do. We won't have time for lunch. We won't have space for gym and PE." And so finding that he was quite numbers-literate, they said, "Would you help us with this?" So he strapped our kids into their car seats and drove the entire Northwest area, counted temporary mailboxes, counted construction sites, built spreadsheets, and came back to the board, of which Mrs. Crackey was a part, and shared those numbers, because it was something no one had ever seen before. It was a dramatic shift, and I think we'll see that in construction in Northwest Omaha as well. Within days of that board presentation, the board decided, "You know, you're right. This is going to be a problem. You will have 1,200 students at Fullerton in less than a year and a half, and this is going to be a problem." So that board built an addition onto Picott, and they know that from the carpet change that is at Picott. And the decision was made to move Standing Bear's construction up so that we would not end up in an over-capacity situation, driving families out, because there was no space. So I just ask us to be very, very thoughtful. What I see here is a big push to push the new Northwest High School over capacity at the very beginning and really hamper what we've got at Burke, just because we're going to shift an awful lot of students, well over 500 students, away from Burke because of the shared area. And I agree that we should get rid of the shared area. I absolutely believe that. I absolutely believe that. But I also believe that we have to also think about what we've never seen before. And what you've never seen before is the decision for kids to stay home because they've got a high school within a short distance from their home that they will drive to. Prairie Wind is coming a long ways to that new high school, from 108th Street to 156th. The woman who spoke today is going to go from 163rd Street right by and then over to Burke. So I have a problem with taking part of the community that really supported the new high school and would, you know, create a situation where the numbers would be lower and bringing in a huge population that will have a negative impact both on Burke and Northwest. So I just think back to that situation back in kindergarten of my oldest child, his very first year, and that number crunching that my husband did and, you know, and getting the call the next day from research saying, hey, would you send all of your spreadsheets to the district, because we've not done this before. We don't really understand how that community works. And I appreciated that. And we all appreciated it at Fullerton. And even a few years later, while I was the Fullerton PTA president, we still had close to 900 kids. Had those decisions not been made by this board to actually really think about the demographics of what happens in Northwest Omaha, we would have, we would have had a significant problem in our community, and we would have lost families then. I do think that we will, I've seen the results from the Picot survey, and I have no doubt we will lose those families. And I don't know that those homes will fill back in with public school families. I want everybody to know, it's not a Burke situation. It's a peer relationship with middle school. And those are so important. Peer relationships in middle school are so critical. And so for the parents who are concerned about that, I get that. You want your kids to have friends that they go on to high school with. This is a very small group. We told them in 2013, you have to be a K-4, and you will go to Buffett, and you will be a K-4, and you're losing fifth and sixth grade. And now we're telling them, we still have to go to Buffett, but we're not allowing you to move on with all of those other relationships. So back in 2013, we created that Buffett environment, but now we're taking a small group of people and saying, no, we're taking a very large group, which I think will have a negative impact on Burke and Northwest. I just think that it'll be a challenge for a future board, because I think we're going to see some demographic shift. And I don't think voters are going to say, oh, yes, let's build in addition onto the new Northwest High School. We might need to come up with the money to do that. I don't want to see portables out there. So those are my thoughts on that and relate to you all.
Thank you. Mrs. Crackey.
I wanted to go back to your numbers, what you said about today, the opting-in number into OPS. What was that number?
At the high school level, it was about 350 students, give or take in a given year, that are opting into one of our seven high schools.
And can you give me the overall district number of opting in?
Overall district number is usually around 1,000 students at all grade levels.
Okay. There are a lot of things just noted here, and I go back in time, and I go back even to today. I believe that Burke people can opt out that live there about 12 different directions between parochial and within the district. So there's a lot of concern and has been throughout the years to keep the people at Burke High. The numbers currently today, the largest school is Central, South, and then Burke, if I've got that correct. And so for the people who are talking about this, again, I noted in my comments, walk with me through a couple of schools, and then you will know more about what we are discussing today. But to tell us something when you haven't been in the schools is somewhat unappreciated, I guess, by this board member, because I'm so open to everybody going with me if they have anything to discuss or talking to me on the phone, and I've always gotten back to people with the information. So I will do whatever I can to help people with this, but it almost is putting a stigma on school or schools, and that troubles me. I guess that's all I need to say about that. But we have always had more than our share of problems going back with all the principals I have known and worked with at Burke High. It has always been a concern about losing our students that are currently in that area to other schools and keeping them and having something there that they want to go to. And we didn't get some of the things given out. We got to be a focused school. Well, we focus on technology a little bit. We focus on the air program so they can fly in airplanes. Not every child wants to go fly in the airplane, however, but it looks like it could be fun. And they have a stimulator there on site. So I want to thank you, and that is the district that I do represent, and I represent a little bit of Northwest as all that segment of people. So I would be amiss if I did not make a comment on that.
Thank you. Mrs. Cassidy.
Thank you, President Snow. So when I first got on this board, one of the main reasons that I wanted to be a part of the board was to address the severe overcrowding, particularly in my area in South Omaha. It is shameful. If you have been in any of the South Omaha schools, they are overcrowded immensely, and it needed to be dealt with. And the bond was the answer to deal with that. We need more schools. We need more space for these children. At the time, it was 52,000, and now it is nearly 54,000, and it is not stopping. And that is a great thing. We want more people to come to our district. We don't want families to leave. And I do apologize, Ms. Simpson, if you, if I, my comments alluded to the fact that I want families to leave. That is the absolute opposite. However, it will happen. This process, I know that I speak for myself, Mr. Hughes, Dr. McFarland, and everyone on research, we wish that this process could make everyone happy. It just can't. It simply will not. There will be numerous families at every single high school in our district that will not be happy. As I said on August 26th, that previous meeting, there will be people that will be looking out their window, and they will see the high school that they want their child to go to, that their child can walk to, but they will not be in the boundary for that school. And that is a harsh reality, but again, as I said at our meeting back in August, this process was not easy. And once we got the bond passed and we were ready to go with new schools and we got that feat taken care of, I knew as well as my eight fellow cohorts that the next thing that we were going to have to face that would be extremely difficult would be boundary changes. It is horribly hard. Your families, this is a reality that we're not going to make you happy, and it is a hard fact, but it's just reality. There are so many things that go into this, as Mr. Hughes stated. Census, projected birth rates, economics, the streets, the logistics, transportation. You have to pick the best plan. You have to pick the plan that's going to do the best good for all of those involved and all 54,000 students. It's not about one school. It's not about one family. It's about trying to make the best choices for our 54,000 students and the two new schools that we have, high schools and elementaries and middle schools. You have to just look at the overall plan. I want to make sure that the public knows again how thoughtful this process was. I was a part of a lot of these meetings. It was thoughtful. We tried very hard to try to think about families and relationships in middle school. And I have a middle school student right now, and she came from her homeschool, and she is in the homeschool that she's supposed to feed into. And she still tells me every night that she doesn't really like school because she has not one student in her class that she went to school with in elementary. And guess what? All her elementary students are in her, are filtered into the school that she's supposed to, and she's still having a difficult time. So I know it's going to be even more challenging for those students that aren't coming from their homeschool into their high school, because it is hard as a parent. So I just want to make sure that the public knows that it was a very thoughtful process. It's been very transparent. We've tried our best, but we do, we do commend and recommend, you know, I mean, you know, we understand that it's just not going to make everyone happy. It's just not.
Any other board members before I give it back to Mrs. Crackey?
I just want to go back to what we might call the olden days. At that time, there was considerable busing, and my two students were bussed. I didn't like it that they were riding the bus, and they didn't have friends in their classrooms, I can assure you. And then they came back to where they were going to attend school. But they went through the era of busing and not knowing people in their classroom. And as a parent, I went to conferences and things and just, we had good teaching there. Good things were happening in those schools. It's just a matter that, I know my son rode on the bus. He didn't know anybody on there. And children in my neighborhood are a lot of parochial children, but he went down there and didn't know anyone. My son would go, my husband would go in the early morning hours and stand by the bus stop until he was picked up. And as a result, he was really picked on because of a parent standing there. It was dark at night when they got to go and be on the bus. So I mean, I went through a lot of busing things, so I can speak to that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. I was around in the olden days. I know a lot of people didn't like busing back then.
Either.
But OPS celebrates diversity, and so I'd like for the staff to talk a little bit about how that played a role in the decision-making here.
Sure. So I think specifically when we think about, you know, students attending their neighborhood school, I mean, I'm a huge proponent for neighborhood schools, but we do know that in our district, students at the high school level especially, are choosing to go to schools that are not their neighborhood school. We have a diverse array of programs across the district at the high school level. There's lots of different experiences that you can have at all of our high schools. Even in the Burke Northwest shared area today, 30% of students are optioning to a school that's not their neighborhood school. I think going forward, I would hope that even in these new school areas, which will likely draw a lot of the neighborhood students to begin with, that families will continue to reach out and go to other schools. They'll continue to apply to other high schools across the district so that we can have diverse experiences at all of our schools. I think that our student assignment plan going forward is going to have to find a way to continue to reinforce that, to continue to support that. So, I mean, it's my hope that we will continue to build on that, and it won't be one area that sends, you know, every one of their students to their neighborhood school or every student options to another school. There'll be diversity across that. I do want to just hit on one other point. When we, when we look at the population that we have at the elementary level, when we've looked at a number of different cohorts, we generally don't keep all of the students that we have at the elementary level when they get to high school. So there's a lot of different reasons for that. Students are optioning in private schools at different grades. They're optioning to, you know, out of the district at different grades. They potentially leave or move out of the city. Students are going to alternative settings when they get to high school, so they're not in one of our seven high schools. So I went back to 2012, 13, and I looked at the third through sixth grade cohort. Had about 15,067 students in it. That would be the ninth through 12th graders in last year's high schools. And we had 13,418 students at those seven high schools. So we didn't, we kept about 90% of those students. Now, I don't disagree that we will, we will see a change in this district when we build two new high schools. I mean, fundamentally, where people are choosing to send their students to school is going to change. Option-outs are going to change. To Mrs. Crackey's point, you know, students on the edge of the district, or families on the edge of the district, are who we see optioning out most. You're building two schools on the edge of the district, so that's obviously going to change things going forward. But when we look at the history of it, we don't generally keep 100% of students that we have at those elementary grades, and we also don't see in any attendance area 100% of students attending their neighborhood school. It's higher in some areas and it's lower in others, but we do see that movement happening at the high school level, albeit it's dropped off a little bit over the past few years, but mostly as a result of a lack of space at our high schools and having caps put at multiple high schools where students can't get into the high school that they're choosing.
And I just wanted to respond, Mr. Pearlman, about the diversity, because that is what we are committed to as well as the district. And the boundaries are really the first step in that process. Our next step will be really to look at our programming and also our student assignment plan that includes the transportation, to really stay committed to that. And this recommendation allows us the capacity to be able to really have that diversity.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of the board, I mean, board members?
See, and thank you guys so much for presenting today, and thank you for everyone on staff, district staff, for the hard work you guys have been putting on this for the, it seems like we started this process when I was on the student assignment plan committee back in 2013.
I think the hard part's actually coming.
I know.
We've got to do it all.
This is the easy part? Oh, man, this is exciting. All right. So we do have, this is an action item, so I will entertain a motion for the recommended boundary changes.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Pearlman, second by Ms. Crackey. Any discussion? Mrs. Gadding.
I just want to make clear, so I'm voting no because of the concerns I have with the numbers related to a decrease in Burke and a decrease a bit at Northwest as well, and an overcapacity issue for the new high school based on the number of empty lots that I'm already seeing construction on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ray. Go ahead, please.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
No.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Aiden.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item J2A, Strategic Plan Update, and I believe Dr. Rebecca Ryan is going to be presenting. I just wanted to make sure our superintendent wasn't going to do your intro.
All right. Thank you. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah. That was a time for an exhale after that vote, after this process, after hearing the honesty and the candor. I feel like I must have made Mr. Ray mad that he put me at the very end of tonight's agenda. Thanks a lot, Matt.
You set the best for last, though.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. My purpose tonight is to update you on the strategic action plan, right? Where we are in that process and we're, I'd say about a third of the way through. We had our first meeting last month where we discussed a series of trends, several dozen trends that are going to impact the future of the district. And in your, in your board packet, I don't know what you call it, board packet, right? You, your board materials, you received a front page that looks like what's on the screen, and the second page is the list of trends. And half of you, if I'm recognizing faces, about half of you attended one of our two meetings last month. So you remember the process of sorting through all of these trends and then putting them on this huge wall in terms of readiness. And this second page of the top trends indicates 13 teams' votes on trends that met these two criteria. These were trends that these stakeholders said, these are high-impact. We know that these are going to have a big impact on the district through 2030, and they were also high certainty. They were sure that they would have an impact. And the zero through 10 scaling is just readiness. So 10 means we feel like the district is super-ready, like one of the things, use of public-private partnerships. These stakeholders felt the district is very ready for that trend. And then there are other trends that this group of stakeholders felt less certain about. But this does a nice, kind of quick capture of where the stakeholders felt we were in terms of these trends. Now, as you'll remember, this process that we're doing is very different than how we normally do strategic planning. Normally, strategic planning says, what have we done in the past, and how can we do it better, faster, and much cheaper, right? What are our greatest hits, and how can we do more of that in the future? This process is very unique. In fact, I've been talking with Dr. Keisha Ray, who's one of our other consultants, my colleague, Dr. Preston Burse, who's been working with me on this process. We think this is the only school district in the country who's using strategic foresight to narrow- to narrow in on its plans. So we're in very rare air here. So we're trying to look at what's coming, and this first meeting last month got us to a sense of those trends. Tomorrow, not October 10th, as it says on this letter, but tomorrow, we do our second lab. And at that lab, you'll see towards the bottom half of the cover letter, tomorrow, these 13 teams will be looking at a series of different scenarios in these three zones. So, if you look at the center zone, the expectable future, right? These are, if Omaha continues to grow as we think it will by about 1.5% year-over-year, right? We know that by 2030, we're going to be a certain population, right? Well, what if we don't grow quite as fast? Or what if we grow even faster than expected? So, we're going to look at expectable futures, we're also going to look at the zone of high aspirations, right? So there'll be a number of teams tomorrow who'll be looking at, "Man, if we got the right resources and used them in the right way, and, you know, we had our staff working on the right things, where could we be then?" But we also have to look at that third zone. It's kind of the icky zone. It's the zone that makes people uncomfortable. It's that third zone, the zone of growing desperation. So, the tool that we're using tomorrow, scenario development, is a critical tool to help you try on different futures. Now, why would you look at, you know, the zone of growing desperation? Nobody wants to talk about that. You know, my mom in Wisconsin would be like, "Nobody wants to talk about that. Just leave that off to the side." But we have to talk about it. We have to talk about it if we really want to see how we're going to deal with whatever the future brings. So tomorrow's Scenario Development Workshop, it's going to be arduous. A lot of people have never done anything like this before, but the folks who have shown up for these meetings have really bitten in. And for those of you who have been there, you've seen that. You can't make people stop talking about the trends. At the conclusion of the workshop tomorrow, we will have a really good sense of the key issues that the district must address and preferably get right, so that it can have the best possible future by 2030. And after tomorrow's workshop, Dr. Ray and Dr. Burst and I will be working very closely together to figure out how to turn that into a tactical plan that people can take action on, but something that also really helps people lift their eyes to see what this district could really be for all students in 2030. So we expect it's going to be ambitious, it's going to be dynamic, and it's going to be actionable, which is why we're calling it a Strategic Plan of Action. So I'll stop. Chairman Snow?
For questions?
Yes, I'll have you take any questions.
You're a great instructor, so I was just soaking it all in. Okay, Mr. Smith?
Have there been, has there been a lot of input from educators on the futures plan support?
Yes, there has been. So, I don't know what the percentage was, but I think it was over half of the folks who were involved in the first series of workshops last month were educators. One of, yeah, so, yes.
Dr. Logan?
In addition to the work that you see that Rebecca's doing, sorry, Dr. Ryan, during the futures labs, I am also, and our team are meeting with our leaders. So today, we met with some high school leaders to look at high school programming upstairs when the board forms their ad hoc committee. They'll, I will take you upstairs to see the, we call it the high school data room, and it has every kind of imaginable data around our high schools, our high school programs, our catchment rates, the cost of programs, participation rates in programs, advanced programs, unique course offerings, retention rates for ninth grade, or actually for course, credit completion for every grade, attendance rates, suspension rates, everything that you can think of about our, about our school district and what's going on in our high school programming. What's really illuminating is to look at our participation rates in some of our programs, the interest or lack thereof in some of our programs, and the, quite frankly, some of the success rates around our programs. And so, as we'll take that, so we met with them today, they have homework, they were great about it, they're going to bring their teams, it is so much data, they're going to bring back their teams. We're doing a similar process with our middle school principals, which will be all, and then in our elementary school principals, it's a select group, because we have 63, and that would be unwieldy. So I think it's 10 or 12 of our elementary principals doing the same kinds of things. We'll be coming in to talk with our student assignment plan, because we also are looking at the magnet title, because we have that on many of our schools, and how we consider that moving forward and what that really means for the district. In addition, we've done our, some values activities to make sure that our strategic foresight is based on what we value as a district. And so several groups, to include the Board of Education, have had an opportunity to do that. All of that information is being given to our partners for them to condense them down to kind of a set of shared values upon which we build this plan. Susan Christoffersen and her team have completed four, and they'll be sharing this with some other groups, higher education, business leaders, career ed folks, the portrait of a high school graduate, and what does it mean to be a high school graduate in the Omaha Public Schools, because that's also an important, because that's our byproduct, I'm sorry, our most important product, I shouldn't have said that, oh, gosh. Our most important thing that we do is make sure that we do that. In the elementary space, we know that the most important thing we do, I'm looking at Donna Dobson, is we teach little children how to read. And if we get that right, so many things will fall into place. So today, we had a call with Children's Literacy Initiative, and they'll be coming to do some needs assessment with us around what we need to do to make sure that we have the best early literacy instruction with our amazing teachers, and how we support them and our young people moving. So it had many, many components, and it's a really thorough look at the district and a very important inflection point. Lastly, we have already had a pretty thorough forensic analysis of our budget. That has been given to our new Chief Financial Officer, who will be taking a deep dive and helping us mull through our ESU budget, our title budget, and then our, we know that we have a pension liability, and how we consider everything in terms of what we know our obligations will be to make sure that we take care of our employees as they enter retirement. So those are all of the components. I did send everything to a colleague today who's going to be doing an infographic, because we felt it was important, because there are so many pieces that go, when you're looking at a district soup to nuts, that go into it and if you're going to do it well. So we're looking forward to our opportunity to have a more in-depth conversation with the board, so that, to make sure that they have a thorough understanding of all of these component parts. Could we have given it all to some consultants and said, "Just bring us back a plan"? We certainly could have, but we would not, as a district, have gone through what is so important for a process, however sticky and uncomfortable it is a little bit, to go through this process. And I left out one other thing. We had, we met with Human Resources the other day to look at our data, it was really stunning, and I'm looking forward to sharing that with the board as well, in terms of the number of active students, active teachers we have compared to retired teachers, and how that impacts, and then the, some important demographics about our classified staff and our certified staff in terms of experience levels, and where that fits into how we need to plan forward for 2030, realizing that 1/4 of people in the Omaha metro will be over 65. And guess what? They're going to still be working. And we have many people, you know, who are working for us, and how do we care for our employees at every stage of their career? So all of those are things that have gone into it. I could, I'm so excited about it, probably kind of geekily so, but, you know, it has been, it is a thorough process. It is going to take us, and some really crucial decisions will need to be made by the board as we move forward, and we decide on what activities we are going to do. We certainly will, many of those will be decisions that the board will need to make and weigh in on as we move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. That was very helpful on seeing how this plan will come together. I just have, I had five, but you answered four of them already, so.
[laughing]
You must have known I sent that email.
I think you sent me something.
I sent you something, but you, okay. So, when you look at this to be completed, and you're saying that we're like the first school district that is
Has used foresight, yeah.
Doing this type of foresight, I mean, is there any other close local government or entity that has done something similar?
Yes.
With, that has like, a school, like, an elected body, students, administration, you know, and staff, where all these different components have to come together? And, you know, what's probably the biggest challenge coming, I mean, lying down the road to bring all this together? I mean, it's like a two-part question.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Snow. So, most of my work is in the public sector. So I do a lot of plans for cities and counties of, you know, all sizes across North America. So I'm very familiar with working with an elected body, but this is certainly the first time I've worked with a K-12 public school district. And I think part of the reason that I'm here is because I did this very process for the Urban League of Nebraska, United Way of the Midlands, and the Greater Omaha Chamber when they came together three years ago, and they said, "We got to figure out the future of our community. These poverty levels are not okay by us. The racial divides in outcomes, not okay. Like, if we want to build a future that we can really be proud of, we need a different way of thinking about it. This, kind of the same old strategic planning wasn't working." So, that is not another school district, as an example, but it's an excellent example of the kind of partnership, right? That when you're trying to think about the community of the future, just this afternoon, I was with, you know, David Brown at the Chamber, and we were talking about the impact that, we call it now 2040, has had, because we were looking out even 10 years beyond what you guys are looking at. And he said, "You know, we are now, as a Chamber of Commerce, playing in places I never thought we would have to play in." He said, "We're having to be advocates for transit. We're now advocates for downtown density, you know, building more dense downtown and, you know, taking away parking." And he said, "If you would have told me five years ago I would be doing that, I would have thought you were full of it." But this process helps you bubble up these issues that you think, "We've got to wrap our heads around this if we want to secure the most prosperous future." So, I've never worked with another district before, but I have worked very close to your very entity for a year and a half.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much on that. Mr. Pearlman?
Yeah.
Thank you. How are you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
Tremendous.
Good.
Listen, I just have a few questions.
Sure.
What's the difference between using foresight, as you call it, and the traditional approach to doing things?
Yeah. So the traditional approach to doing things tends to be, "Let's look at the plan that we just finished, and let's figure out what we need to do better, faster, cheaper," or in the case of, listen, schools in South Omaha are packed, we've got to, you know, redraw a district boundary. They sometimes can be a little bit more reactionary to like whatever the issue of the day is. A metaphor that one of my teachers used was, "A lot of planning kind of happens in a fireman kind of way, like, 'Where's the fire? Let's go put it out. We're going to take care of this and solve it on our watch.'" What we're trying to do in foresight is anticipate where those fires will be, kind of play the role of the fire marshal, right? Let's inspect the future that we're expecting, so that we can anticipate where this change is going to be, so that we're not caught flat-footed when this happens, but we're ready. We've already spent some time thinking about what these future scenarios might be. That's the biggest difference, is the bias towards anticipating change versus, you know, kind of reacting as things come up and doing a plan that improves and iterates on what we've always done.
And, what, I mean, I appreciate that, that makes sense. I do see a lot of, you know, like whack-a-mole, another way of putting it, but what is different about the approach that
I see.
Gets the results that we're looking for?
Yep, yep. So we use a six-step foresight process, and the first three steps are what's really different than planning. So, in the first step, we frame the domain that is future-oriented. So we're asking, in this case, the domain is the future of the Omaha Public Schools through 2030. So, even though, you know, we might end up with a five-year plan, we're trying to look even a little bit further out on the horizon to see what that 10-year future could be. The second step, and it's the results that you're seeing on the back of, you know, in the big sort, the top trends for 2030, the second step is to look at trends in five areas. Society, which is kind of the demographic trends, very similar to the things that you were pulling on for the district maps, society, technology, economy, environment, and politics. The acronym is STEEP, makes it easy to remember, right? Society, Technology, Economy, Environment, Politics. And we looked at, as I said, dozens of trends in those areas to try to figure out how ready OPS was for those trends, that we felt were going to have the highest impact. So that's the second step. The third step is what we're doing tomorrow, and that is working on scenarios where we intentionally play some of these trends out in those three zones. So if the trend continues and we're just kind of have a business-as-usual scenario, what does that look like? If the trend continues, but we have, we meet it with the right resources, we can have a pretty rich and awesome future, right? Uh-oh, what if we, what if something terrible happens? If the economy falls into recession? If we, you know, if we can't meet our pension obligations? Or, you know, some of these, some of these issues that kind of keep you awake at night, wondering like, "What if this happens?" So that's the third step of foresight that makes it really different. Most strategic plans don't look deeply at steep trends, and most strategic plans only put forward one future, and that is the future that they want to have happen. They don't critically look at other possible futures, and foresight does that.
Just a couple other questions. Did the participants come up with this?
Yes. Oh, the participants, I'm sorry. The participants did not come up with the trends.
Okay.
My team came up with the trends. The participants sorted the trends and ranked them, yes.
Okay. And where, how were those created?
Yep. So, we go through a process where we brainstorm with the client on the steep trends. So we circulated a document among several of Dr. Logan's senior staff members, and I actually did bring along a copy of all the trends that we used. And I'm going to, I'll just explain this at the microphone so that everyone can hear it. So, to make a trend, one of the steep trends, it has to be, the factor itself has to be changing over time. So usually, a lot of these, like, trend number one was increasing population, especially age 65-plus. As Dr. Logan just said, it's kind of a startling thing about how the region is going to be changing. And then we do the projection through 2030 if we can find it, and then we cite it. So this way, we know that these are data-driven, is that my time's up? I'm waiting for Mr. Ray to be like, "One minute, Rebecca." So these are data-driven trends, they are as future-facing as possible, we try to get as many projections that are, you know, quantifiable for the future as possible. And the last thing I just want to say about this is, where we can't get local trends for OPS, sometimes we have to use regional trends or county trends, and where we can't get trends at the local or county level, we have to use state trends. So let me bring this over, Mr. Pearlman, and then maybe you could just swing it around the table.
Okay. Thanks. Appreciate it. One question I have about, the list is where the challenges of the pension fall in that, because I don't see it on the list.
Yep. Yeah, it did not make the list. One of the reasons is because we didn't know what the projection was going to be. My understanding was that there's a task force that was working on some if-then options, and without knowing exactly how that was going to play out, we, as you can see from reading these trends, it was hard to write it as we would write a trend.
Okay. And I think
I think that, well, we actually have a financialist who's working with us, which, I think you all got the, I sent you the preliminary, you can take, you take your time, because he'll be back here at the end of, close to the end of October. And so that's part of his, there's, one of the reasons, we knew, because that is such an important thing, that we needed to have a financialist on our team, and so that's part of his role, so that will feed up into what is the final. It likely wasn't something that, as a group of And so, that's part of his, there's, one of the reasons, we, we knew because that is such an important thing that we needed to have a, a financialist on our team, and so that's part of his role, so that will feed up into what is the final. It likely wasn't something that, as a group of folks participating in the Futures Lab, that they could provide any significant input on, that wasn't being worked on outside of that, on, outside of that group. But he, the, the principal reason for having him on the team was that, and we see some other things, some other opportunities in our budget to do some things better.
Yeah, and, Mr. Perman, you should know that the four of us, so, the three of us whom are here and, and Dr. Trautemberg, whom you're referring to, we are talking all the time about how, how all of this comes together. So, I don't want you to think that that's being forgotten. It has not been forgotten.
I think my final questions are about how we measure progress and, and goals, because that was one of the most disappointing things about the last, last strategic plan is, I, I sort of feel like the plan was developed and then it was abandoned. You know, when I first got on the board, I asked about, you know, I went through the strategic plan and I, I said, "Well, what's the baseline for this? What's the baseline for that?" And for a lot of them, if not most of them, they just weren't even taken, not even the baseline. So, how is that going to be different with your approach?
Yeah, well, we don't generally release plans that don't have specifics, and I would point you to Greater Omaha 2040, the process that I mentioned. Some things truly can't be measured. I mean, one of the big goals that came out of that is we want every citizen who lives in this region to feel a sense of place in their neighborhood. So, when you heard somebody previously talking about mixed-use development, right? That's one of the things that helps feel, you know, helps things feel more like, "Oh, it's like a neighborhood." So, that's not the kind of thing that can be measured, but there are, there are a lot of things that can be. So, to the extent that we can measure every third grader reading at grade level, that will show up in this plan and you can measure against it. And I'm anticipating there will be some qualitative things that we will include that you can't measure as well. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Well, Dr. Ryan, thank you so much for the hard work that you're putting in with OPS, and thank your, your colleagues as well. Also, thank you, Dr. Logan, for taking our board on this new journey, and it was one of our tasks, I'm sure, when you looked at our old strategic plan, that we need to do something different and look forward.
Thanks.
So, with that, Dr. Holman.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, Negotiations, Real Estate, and Legal Advice.
There's a motion to go into closed session by Dr. Holman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cassidy. We'll call Mr. Ray. Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Godding?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Perman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipe?
Aye.
Nynot? Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, Negotiations, Real Estate, and Legal Advice. Let the record reflect the board went into closed session at 8:22. Let the record reflect the board went into closed session at 8:22.[111.72]